Anyway, I didn't feel that she really addressed what Capri wanted. So I reviewed it the other day and I have a list of recommendations that I'd like to share with you, Phil, as a head of the Facilities and Safety Committee. And Shay's here because she was a former one. So the three of us all have experience on this, alright?
What happened on this, I, my mom had her stroke and I was caregiving full-time. And the Capri response was due and then overdue and we got permission to lag it a little bit. And so then Linda and Steve got together and did it together. And I was not there.
What is this in response to? Do we have that document?
Uh, did you get the Capri report, the full report?
No.
Okay.
No, so let's...
I didn't bring it with me. Um, it was, uh, it was from the walk-through and...
Okay, now wait, let me just tell you, all of these things, people do not need to keep them in their personal files anymore. We need to have a binder of all of the Capri reports. So Shay, if you could pull those things out and we could set up, because we're gonna eventually have an office space where we have working binders for the district, okay? So...
That'll be great, yeah.
Yeah.
We have a binder, in the old days we had them.
Any idea where it went?
Shoot, no. That was back when I was doing the caretaker...
Was it at your house?
No, no, uh-uh.
Was there a file?
I don't think so. If there was, it burned up.
See, this is also a reason, we need to have an office where we can have these binders and things behind a locked door where staff, not staff, because we don't have staff, where we can go in and get them.
Like a normal board, we have staff.
Right.
Okay, so we go, alright, so this is, Linda created this in response to whatever they...
Yeah, and Shay, and, and there's a lot of driver things in here. And I pulled out what I could find and some of, I'm not sure what it is, so Shay, you need to explain it. So let's start with the first one.
Well, I'm sorry to break you in again, but this was submitted to Capri, right?
Yes.
This was submitted.
And, and did they accept it and say, "Okay," or...
Yes, but Phil, I don't care because I don't think that what we said we would do matches what they needed. That's why I wanted to meet with you.
Here's something that did happen. Um, it was voted to send to Capri before the final document was finished, which includes new policies that were not voted in by the board.
Right, they haven't been approved.
And then, and then, the completed document was sent over to Capri right before, right, right after the election, but before you guys took off this.
Right.
It was a, it was a real quick...
Right, so it included things that the board never voted on or approved or anything like that.
Oh, for Christ's sakes, okay.
So, alright, so can we...
And I, and I, and I'll just finish with this. I was asked to put in dates and completion and stuff like that. And my name is on a lot of things that I never reviewed after it was sent to Capri. So I was, I was also wanting to go over it with some other minds.
But, Phil, the way that Capri works is they're, they're done. They're satisfied with this.
Yes.
Right, so that's why I'm suggesting, if we go through this and, and fulfill...
Just one?
Is that somebody?
No.
And fulfill what they're really asking us to do.
Absolutely.
It's just a matter of getting the right procedures set up.
Yeah, absolutely.
So Kevin, you feel free to chime in anytime you want.
I really don't have to be here, huh?
No. It's, it's much more detailed than the previous responses of the board, but I know that the Capri mandates have changed and there is more information that they want.
Yeah.
Again?
Yeah.
I hereby adjourn Kevin Talk for this meeting.
Okay. Excuse Kevin Talk, okay?
Excuse Kevin.
We'll see what, seven, that's okay, yeah.
Do you, do you assign, do you assign Debbie to be the chair, the new chair of the meeting?
I assigned Debbie to be the new chair.
For tonight's meeting.
So this is like a committee thing, it's not a committee.
Now, this guy's, you are all, he needs to be one. You two are just more or less briefing him and I think that's great.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Do you guys want some wine?
No, I brought mine.
I brought two.
Thank you guys, I brought two.
We have a whole bunch on the trail.
Okay, so the first one is PRC Section 5164 prohibits special districts from hiring an employee or volunteer for a position having supervisor or discipline authority over any minor event being convicted of certain crimes. Capri requires reemployment, criminal background screening, questionnaire, fingerprinting, and background check with the Department of Justice for employees and volunteers who work with minors. Vehicle policy DMV and insurance verification, AV 1825, two-hour interactive training for supervisors, sexual harassment training. So, and then the next part, the recommendation that, who wrote the recommendation?
That would've been Bob, uh, Bob, um...
The Capri guy, not Rick?
Capri Bob.
Capri, you owe...
No, Rick is new. This was from the, 1934.
Okay, and then this is about verifying the driving record and to use this pull notice program. So I found a couple of policies that we already had in place about, and this is where I started to get confused, Shay.
I got confused on the whole pull notice thing and I called Rick Richards and said, "Do we have to do that as, you know, anybody driving the van to the children's center?" He said, "No," but it's something with the director of the children's center.
Well, this is what we had, there's two things. Here's a personnel policy for driver acceptability and I made notes on it till ended. And then I found this, which I think is a template from someplace else. Now, you know, John, you might wanna ask John to review these and we're gonna have to figure out which one is which. But these provide for what I think that they wanted. And I thought Amy was doing this pull notice program.
I don't know, because when I looked into this, Amy was gone. I didn't send a message to her. And I asked Lori, Lori didn't know anything about it. She didn't know what to do. She wanted me to get with Rick. Rick said, "No, you don't have to do that," but that was just a quick...
So we need to have a van driver policy, okay? That one I thought was pretty good, that really detailed one.
Do we have this in electronic form anyway?
No, I just found it hard copies.
I don't have it. Oh, unless it was...
I might have it, I might have it on my computer. In fact, I think I do have it on my computer, yes.
Oh, right, okay, because that would be helpful to change it.
If it's, if it's on the Capri response, there is a van driver policy, but I don't remember it being that long, but there is one digitized on the Capri response.
Okay. Let me see this thing here, hold on a second. Are you seeing the driving record?
You guys can use one of those scanners that sorts, they're about 400 bucks, it organizes. You feed it and it puts it into a file and if you call it up and it pulls the words out of it and you give it a file.
Never heard of it.
It staples. I'll print out the thing and I'll give it to you and I'll get that.
Okay.
It's a policy, I understand, so, uh, this kind of...
Oh, okay, okay, now I get it. But we would need to do that because right now...
So basically, the first thing is to make sure that, that, um, we have a DMV check on Lori. Does, is she the only person driving the van?
No.
Who else is driving it?
Oh, you mean right now?
Yeah.
Yes, I believe so, but other...
I can't believe you guys all came for our little Capri meeting.
Hey, they obviously need something to do.
Winnie needs to get out of the house. Either way, it's work. Alright, so, um, there are other approved drivers for the van in, for other events and stuff like that, but not regularly. Do we have a list of approved drivers?
I am, right now Ron Shepston is. We have been approved by Capri to drive.
Well, well, do these work with, with minors? That's the main thing, you tend not to drive around minors.
Oh, that's, that's a different thing. I mean, that's two different things.
No, no, but they're the recommendation. It's anyone who drives a district vehicle or drives their own vehicle in district business.
Yeah, yeah. This isn't just for, that, that, being with children is on top of it. This is the basic baseline of driving a vehicle that is owned by the district.
So is there a list somewhere of approved drivers?
Lori's got a file.
Well, why would Lori have, well, because we have a van.
Because she kept it at the children's center because she has a van.
Alright, so, so my feeling is, is that it's probably unlikely that we've been checking the licenses, right? Heck, were you checking the licenses when you were...
Nope.
On the board? So we need to adopt a policy and then we need to check the licenses, right, Phil?
Yeah.
Okay. Annually?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know about this pull notice program, but...
Why? But I know Amy had looked, she told me that they were doing it.
I'll look into it, I just don't know.
She may have, yeah. There was a lot of things Amy and I didn't discuss, she was a director and I'll just teach.
Now, I do have a whole folder on van policies that I actually got at the children's center. Because Kevin asked for it.
Okay.
Kevin left.
Right, okay.
So, here is the vehicle and transportation policy. Here's the notes on driver responsibility and handbook revisions. Oh, here's the pull notice program information. Here's a, a safety check. Here's the pull notice program. And then we also did accident reports. This should be all part of, is there a binder in the van?
Um, I don't know, I haven't been in the van for a long time. But, um, Amy started something because we had an issue where someone borrowed the van and then later on there was a dent in it and nobody knew where it came from. And so Amy, there should be also, one of these, should be a document where someone who's using the van, checking it out, goes through it with the, the director and...
Right, a checkout.
Yeah, a checkout.
So, alright, so let's not go too crazy on this. Should we just first start, Phil, what do you want to look at?
Well, I think what I want to do first off is talk to Lori about her DMV check. I mean, maybe she went down and did it already or something, I have no idea. So I need to talk to her about that, right?
You can, we can print them out for $2, the DMV will be to you, Kevin did it, I did it. Oh, Kevin was one of the drivers.
Yeah, and, but I can't do that, like, I couldn't have printed it up for her. She's gotta do it herself, right?
Um, yeah, I had to print out my own, Kevin printed out his own.
But, so, if, so if we just focus, do we pay insurance out of it?
It's Capri, Kevin. That's the only insurance that we have.
Okay, okay. Alright, so basically then for this Capri report, we'll just focus on the pulled out, the pull-out thing and that everybody who's driving the van has, meets the requirements.
Right.
Okay? And then you have to look at your, the driver policy, okay? So we're gonna do, so we do the driver policy. And then we'll deal with these other policies later, okay?
Yeah.
Is pull notice one of the other policies we're gonna deal with later or are we gonna do that?
Well, that's kind of part of what he's doing, right, figure out what's going on.
Yeah, okay.
Alright, second thing, ADA. The district should perform a comprehensive self-assessment in needs that, I didn't think anybody was gonna be here, so... And needs analysis of its sites at least every five years. The district should prioritize those needs and commit itself to an implementation plan over a reasonable period of time. The district should have established procedures for entering into a good faith interactive discussion where the need for reasonable accommodations is indicated. So I think that the response got really convoluted to this. And what all Capri is asking for is every five years an ADA self-assessment and, um...
I've had training in ADA requirements.
Well, and I found it a great assessment form. So actually, we have a, we have an ADA policy that should probably be reviewed. At some point, we're gonna have to sit down and, okay, so number two...
Now, you know the Majeska Center is completely exempt from ADA requirements, right?
Yeah, I remember. How was it?
What?
It's exempt from ADA.
Old, it's the old, the old grandfather.
The doorways are like 32 inches wide, can't get a wheelchair through there and...
And it's a door.
But if you, but if you upgrade it, you upgrade it, then you upgrade the ADA requirement.
Exactly, yeah, exactly.
Well, that's why this is, because it was always when they have...
Yeah, yeah.
Alright, so I found this to be a really nice, easy-to-use assessment. So I suggest that you just put that on your schedule.
Yeah.
And then somehow, we need to have another, we'll have to organize all this so that every five years this is done, okay? How often are the Capri visits? Because we didn't do it annually.
They used to be annually. Yeah, I think it was between Bob and Rick, it wasn't happening annually. But maybe we'll be caught up now, maybe Rick will be coming every year, okay?
So then the next one, this was a...
Hold on, has Rick, has Rick said anything to you about when he's coming out next?
No.
And when was the last time he came out?
April.
In April, okay. Thanks.
So we need to just try and get all the safety procedures up to snuff.
We need a binder, Debbie, you're right, okay.
Are you, what are you giving the safety, you did the safety report, right?
Yeah, I did it, but I haven't, I haven't...
I did the checklist.
I did the checklist, but I haven't created the report yet.
And did you get my email today with the Word doc? I'm sorry, I sent you a PDF before.
I saw that, glanced at it when I was walking out the door.
The Word doc came today.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, I had it on a different hard drive.
Oh, I, okay, I see what it was, and I didn't have a chance to look at it, but I got it.
Alright, so then the next thing is that all full-time new hires are required to be given a post-op or Capri placement medical exam after all other background checks have been completed.
Wait, where are you?
We have an injury... You know, they did it, number, oh, I'm sorry.
Injury and illness.
It's the IIP.
Injury and illness, we have a policy for that too.
Yeah, we got an IIP, don't we?
Do you have all these policies together in the binder?
No, I don't know, uh-uh. I have no idea where they are. I know we had an IIP, but I don't know where they are.
And look, I even put when it was adopted, because this is what I did when I was on the board.
Yeah.
Alright, so...
I think we did that together, Debbie, excellent.
Yeah, I'm sure we did, alright.
So let me check with Beth, maybe she's got it.
Didn't, uh, and didn't...
No, she won't have it, Phil, don't even ask her.
And didn't, um, didn't Lori say she just found it on the...
Lori's got one over there, yeah, I saw that when, when we did our checklist, she had an IIP.
So get a copy of that, alright? And then here it says that the program needs to be reviewed at least annually. It is recommended that the district document their annual review in whatever format best fits the needs. So, so for this one, oh. And this is another thing where I think things just went a little nuts on all this personnel record policy. They didn't ask for a personnel record policy. We just have to keep them in a locked file. And, but we don't have any employees anyway, any full-time employees.
No, we don't have any full-time.
So it's not really relevant. But if we do have any, we have to have the medical files locked, okay? So there's nothing really on this one we need to do. So I just kept this because I found it with everything else.
Okay, now here's an interesting thing, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, you're...
No, I'm just gonna move on to the next thing.
Yeah, the employee entrance medical exams?
Yeah, I thought that was really strange myself.
I have never heard of such a thing.
Yeah, and who pays for it?
So anyway, um, we did medical exams at the children's center, we need TV tests. We have to go in and have a medical exam.
A full medical exam? Or just a TV test or something?
I had, I had TV tests and I don't, it was so long ago, but I did have a medical exam.
Well, if we ever do hire somebody full-time, then you'll have to ask Capri what they mean by this.
Yeah, because I...
And I was not hired full-time when I did that. I was hired part-time.
Well, teachers have to have certain clearances, like the TV and things like that.
Yeah, it was for teaching at the center.
Right, it's not the same, this is any full-time employee.
Any, any full-time employee, right. But we don't have any. Everybody's subcontracted, aren't they?
Yeah.
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 We don't have any full-time employees. It'd be nice if we did.
Do you know, here again, this one, the original document would help me out here because it says District Requirement Code.
What are you reading?
I'm sorry, right at the, at the first page, under this first column. Is this really from Capri or is this something that we as a district required and Capri is noting it? Or, in other words, this is, this column is...
This is from Capri, I think, isn't it?
Well, see, that's, yeah, I don't know.
I think, I thought the first two columns are from Capri, but maybe I'm wrong. Shay, do you know?
It says District Requirement Code, it doesn't say Capri Requirement Code.
But Capri's for special districts, isn't it?
Yeah, it's just, I, I don't know.
We'd have to be looking at the full, um, the Capri lock screen paperwork.
You got your PRC Section 5164.
Yeah.
Okay, so, you know, that's, that's obviously cited there, but then you get into just...
But the next one says it's an additional Capri standard and requirement. So it sounds like it was written by Capri.
Yeah. Yeah, in that particular one, but you don't have that same, in other words, it doesn't say recommendation as, or additional Capri standard requirement up at the top. It just says recommendation. So I, I mean, it would help, it would help to have the original inspection report from April, but... You know, maybe, I wonder if they've got it at Capri.
I don't think that those usually have very much information on them. I think this is what they use to tell you to clean things up, from what I remember. Because of the reports, pretty much, well, I don't know, maybe I'm wrong. Actually, they used to give us those written reports and then I wrote responses. Because I have a copy of it, so you could ask Capri. Have you talked to that guy yet?
No, I haven't, in fact, that's on my list, yeah, I gotta talk to Rick.
Okay, so this illness and injury and illness prevention program, number three, just get the, see what Lori has at the children's center, okay? Okay, and then the medical exams, we don't really have to do anything except if we ever get employees, we have to keep their medical records locked up.
Yeah, that's just for full-time, alright, okay, alright.
Life safety, now this gets back to one of Phil's things that he likes a lot, these material safety data sheets. And then fire extinguishers should be currently tagged and first aid kits properly stocked. So we just, where do you...
I just updated the MSDS sheets.
Okay, should we make copies of those and put them in, at all three places? Majeska and Silverado?
Absolutely, the children's center has their own, which we just checked. And I made a copy from Majeska because they didn't have it. And I made, and, and there's the copy here and they're all up there.
And did you do that with Steve or did you talk to Steve about it? Because he was working, he was supposedly going to be doing that.
Communication breakdown, no, I didn't talk to Steve about it, I just did it.
Okay.
So I'll talk to him about it.
Because I don't know if he had one or he was...
I don't think he's got it, because I nailed him, I grabbed him, so...
Maybe you just stayed tuned.
Okay, now, but there are a few issues here, um...
On the MSDS?
Yeah, on this one, the life safety thing. And that is the fire extinguisher. Shay, didn't you say one, if the fire extinguisher, someone said one wasn't inspected?
Um, one or two in Majeska hadn't been re-inspected, but then when I came back over here and told Steve on Saturday, he said, "They're over here and they need to be taken back over to Majeska, they've been brought over here." So the ones that are over there are on.
Very good, okay.
He said, that's what he said on Saturday, that there's, there's some...
So can you do that?
They need to be switched out and those brought over.
Okay.
I guess, something like that.
Okay, that's quite possible, because you see, what we would do is we grab all the ones in Majeska. When, when they do it, they come in and do them all. And what I would do, I don't know, Steve probably did this one after I quit doing it. You put them all in the, in the parking lot, they come and they do them all and then you redistribute them, it's real easy.
Who does that?
I don't know, I was doing it, probably Steve's doing it.
No, no, who...
I think it's in the fire department.
Uh, no, it's not the fire department, there's a company that does it and, uh, that was years ago, I don't remember the name. Orange County, was Orange County Fire or something or other? Wow, wait a minute, I'm remembering now, they were over in Orange, um, it's over on Orange on, like, LaSalle.
It doesn't really...
It should say on there, actually, yeah.
Because they've been coming in May.
It should say on there.
Okay, I think, I think, Phil, we should get new first aid kits, there were two...
State Fire Marshal, South Coast Fire Protection, San Clemente.
Okay, that's a different group.
That's on there.
Okay.
There were two fire first aid kits in the kitchen that were both incomplete and old. So I think, just doesn't Costco have first aid kits?
I don't know, but I don't...
That was on Steve's list of things to do. He was going to buy two new, um, first aid kits and replace the old ones.
Well, did they have a new one at the children's center?
I don't know about the children's center.
I saw it, but I don't think I inspected it.
Should I, should we just order them online?
Could.
You could, let me check.
Then it's safe, see, make sure he hasn't done it because it was on his list, but...
Yeah, I think we should just get...
We can ask him at 7:00.
Okay.
And then here, we really should have emergency procedures to evacuate for the old things. Do we have that?
Yes, but this one, um, when we looked, um, last week, it was missing. Have you seen it?
Well, no, but, um, Steve had made hand-drawn ones. And then, um, he handed them off to me to make copies and laminate them. So we did that, because I hadn't with that.
He didn't remember, he didn't know where it was the other day. You have them?
No, he has them back.
Oh.
I gave them all the...
How long ago, Jenny?
Um, laminated ones.
How long ago did you do that?
Well, it's like around the fair.
Oh, well, it's missing.
So you need to check with Steve.
They were not put up, we made one for there and there at both exits.
But you went about Majeska and what about the children's center?
No.
Majeska had one the other day.
Those were not the ones I did.
Yeah, children's center has one, but this one was missing. Do you have a copy of it then? Did you copy it?
I do on my computer, but we made two, because there was supposed to be one for each door to show the route. Oh, and maybe one in the bathrooms, I forget, I forget how many I made now, it's been a while.
Because we have nothing in this building.
Can you send me the files, like a Word file or...
I would think it would be PDF because I just copied what he did and then I widened out things to make the exit route different from where they set.
Could you shoot it over to me?
I would try, if I, if I do still have it, I'm not positive, but...
Alright, so we only need to deal with that for Silverado, Shay.
Yeah, uh, didn't we see it on all in, in Majeska, Phil?
Yeah.
Yeah. And it was here, the last inspection that we did, so it's only been since the last Capri report, late summer, then it's been missing.
Um, drills, I mean, we don't have anybody, but the children's center can do drills. And maybe they do, but, but it's senseless to have a drill in a community building where you don't have a regular group of people in there. We, we...
I know.
We could do one now, but...
This is the kind of thing in these responses that I think were not appropriate.
A little overkill, yeah.
Well, that was based on what Rick said at this table when he came in April because I asked that question and I said, "Well, the children's center does drills, but we don't need to be doing that, do you?" And he said, "Well, it would be a good idea if you did." But that doesn't really make sense for us in public meetings.
And if you're gonna say it'll be a good idea if you, and that's a lot different than you must.
You must, right, right. It wasn't you must.
And then I don't know, this says a verbal recommendation was made for the surveyor to develop and use a maintenance and inspection log. What's that?
Surveyor?
Yeah, and who's the surveyor?
Oh, that's not, that's not surveyor like the guy with the...
That would be us.
That's the surve-er, it shouldn't be the-er.
That's your big O.
It's not that, it's not a surveyor.
That would be us, right? When we do the, when we do the inspection.
By the surveyor, no, the surveyor would be, would be Rick, if Rick did this.
Why would Rick have a maintenance log? That doesn't make sense.
Well, it says a verbal recommendation was, a verbal recommendation made for, by the surveyor to develop and use a maintenance and inspection log. Okay, that's just, that's the one, you should have a log.
But, Phil, are you using our forms? Which forms are you using for your...
They're...
Oh, here's all my notes, I've been doing this totally on the fly without looking for my notes.
Do you have the other, I didn't, I didn't print all that stuff out from the Capri report response. There was another inspection log for the district that wasn't the checklist. Do you have that? I think that's what they're talking about.
Here's the checklist for the children's, yeah, oh. But this is...
We've never done that before.
Well, why would you say the ceiling's clean? That doesn't make any sense.
You're talking about, um...
That additional log.
It's all right here, I keep all the things.
Yeah.
This is silly.
Yeah, this thing, you're talking about, you're talking about this thing.
The safety checklist is one thing, the inspection log is another.
You're talking about this thing, this, this book that you're talking about?
Yeah, this is silly.
Yeah, this is, this is...
This is not for us, this is silly.
No, this is, this is a total OSHA checklist.
Right, and I like our little forms.
I like our little forms too.
Do you like our little forms, Phil?
Yes, I use, yes, I like the little forms. They're simple and they're, they're easy to do and I get them.
And I think that these can count as a safety and maintenance log.
Absolutely, that's what I did for the last Friday.
Did you use, have you made, I had two... Did you use, have you made, I had two of these.
I made changes to it prior to this being made.
Yeah.
That, that, or prior to this being submitted. That, that took some of the ocean material from this into ours. I updated ours with ocean material that she said was pertinent.
Well, where is it?
It's on, these are, this, is this the old one or the new?
This is a revised one, I think.
If this is revised and it's got animal corrals and everything, it's the finished one, this is it. Transportation vehicles, cause this is the children's center one. I broke it into Silverado, children's center and park district stuff and I, I separated it out. The one she had has everything all in one.
Yeah.
And you print out three of them and you all forget the children's center.
That's, that's fine, that's, that's more, that's more detailed than our old one.
Oh, and you have the transportation thing on here too.
I separated it out.
You know, the other thing we need in the van is a sign-in sheet for drivers, so we know who drives it on what days and when. I'll make a note of that too. The van thing's gonna be a little bit more complicated.
See, that would've got me in trouble when I took a little extra detour driving kids and went to a park. Or to the ice cream store. That, I don't, I don't like that idea.
Alright, so Phil, so, do you have these on your computer? Do you have her new ones?
Shay sent it to me.
Alright, and you have this one for the parks?
Yes.
Alright, so we have both of these.
Yes.
So I'll put this in the folder and this one we're gonna just destroy, okay?
Yeah, these are what I sent you a while back and I said, do you like this one or do you like this one? You guys decide.
Yeah, and I was like, I like the simple one.
And I think that these should meet his requirements.
Alright.
That was it.
Okay. And then we're gonna talk at the, at the regular, well, at the regular special meeting. We're gonna talk at the, at the seven o'clock special meeting about the facilities. And what I did was, I took, I took your list, um, here's the MSDS sheets, by the way, this is for Silverado, this is what I was looking for, I'll put them over there. The checklist, uh, for the, the repair list. Fran gave me this old sheet, I don't know if she talked to you about it.
Wait, wait, no, I'm sorry, I was trying to organize my.
Oh, you must, I'm really. I'm jumping ahead maybe to tonight's meeting, but she gave me a list and it actually had a couple things on there that I think we should add to this list, which I did.
Oh, yes, I, I'm gonna get more things to add tonight too.
I, I'm sure we will, so what I did was, I just copied it as is, some of these have been taken care of. Some of them have, uh, things that, for instance, the tables, I went to Walmart yesterday and they've got, they've got the folding, I should really save this all for tonight, but they've got, but they've got the folding tables there for forty bucks, you know?
The right, the full-size ones or the mini ones?
The, the, the six-foot.
Oh, good.
The, the crappy ones I bought before, but they were only supposed to last like five years, you know, we've had them for like ten.
Yeah, we could.
So, anyway, so.
And Brett put that other table back together.
Did you get?
Already? Did you guys know this was weekly?
Remember that table we didn't throw away, Wendy would go, this could, this could be pulled back together.
Put that away.
Waste not what, not my mommy always said.
Alright, so, um, I'll type up the minutes, um, and this'll be, uh, Phil, you'll start once you get organized and everything. We'll start working on all of this stuff, okay?
Yes.
And, get, we'll get all the policies together.
Yes.
And not Majeska.
No, I've got a separate one from Majeska.
Oh, you have one already?
I have one already, that's good. Alright.
Okay, do you have anything else?
Should we ask the audience?
Do you guys have anything, although, they're actually not on the agenda. But if you like.
I was, I do have something and I've said it before, um, I'm concerned about any policies that we make concerning personnel files because they include personnel files at the children's center.
Okay, the, the files for the, I think that the personnel files under licensing, there are standards for personal, personnel files. So that, that would be what applies at the children's center, we don't have to write a policy.
Okay, alright, it would, so, um, how, and how do we make sure, and how do we make sure that it's followed in the future because it hasn't been?
Shay, it's the same thing with all the things that we do. And this is what policymaking is all about. It's great to make a policy, but if you don't have any enforcement provisions, then your policy is worthless, basically.
It's like the United States government, yeah?
So anyway, so.
Is the meeting adjourned, that's not on?
No, and then it's all the video things.
Oh, oops.
So, I mean.
Sorry, Barack.
As we, as we move ahead and if we want to start creating those types of policies, you know, they should include some sort of, um, and I, John would actually know more about this type of thing than I do, but there should be some sort of a.
Is it with personnel files at the children's center, according to law, there's supposed, if, if, if the agency directors need to see something, they're supposed to be the director present and a log sheet of sign-in, sign-out of what they're looking at. And it's supposed to be documented. So, I would think that that would need to be a policy that we keep at the children's center.
Now, say something else about policies, alright? It's, it's fine to have policies too, having enforcement provisions is one thing. But really, what we're really talking about here is management. And if you don't have good management who enforce the policies, then it really doesn't make any difference what policies are on the book. And one of the things that has happened in this community is that people throw around the policies. And that's fine, they have the policy and to throw it around, but all it does is create a lot of angst because if the managers are not enforcing the policies, it, really, what you need to do then is, is take it out on the manager. Give them, you know, write them up, do things like that.
We didn't have a manager when that happened at the children's center. It was the day before she came and she wouldn't have allowed that.
Right, but what I'm saying is that it's not as simple as just writing a policy and adopting it.
Yeah.
You know, there's two other sides to it, there's a management side and then there's the enforcement side. And that's why it's not a good idea to have tens of thousands of policies.
Right, don't need to, I mean, I mean, uh, this, this could be handled by just giving the, the law to the director and saying, this is how you're supposed to handle.
But there's another thing that has to follow that, alright? Yeah, you can tell a director that this is what the law is and this is what you're supposed to do. But, and many of the programs that I work with, the directors do that, but you know what happens? The director never bothers to check. So somebody else might go and, I mean, if, if they don't do their job, that's why I'm saying, it boils down to, that's one of the aspects of policy enforcement, do you have employees or people working for you who actually enforce the policies? That should be part of their evaluation as somebody who works for the district. Do they enforce district policies or not? Do they know district policies? Because historically, I know I'm jabbering, but it's kind of important. But, because historically, every time a new board comes in, no, no one's ever put together the files. I mean, Port Bell was practically primed today because there's no room in those files for anything. No one's ever, there's never been a document retention policy as to what you keep and what you throw out.
Right.
I mean, it's just, it's the, the whole, the whole issue about policies, it, from one board to the next, boards feel like they're starting with a clean slate. And people don't understand that SMRPD is not the five individuals on the board. SMRPD is a government entity that is responsible for taxpayer dollars in the community. So it's, um, there needs to be more of an institutional memory from one board to the next. And the new board can't just say, oh, you know, that policy's gone. If the board, if the previous board adopted it, it is still a policy, but that's how this place has been run for decades, so.
Wendy has her hand up.
Well, I was just gonna say is, I mean, that's one thing that they talk about in even state government, et cetera. My father was in that and it ends up being that, you know, because you keep having new people elected to an office, so they don't know the procedures. It's really the administrators and administrative assistants who are there consistently from term to term to term to term. And they're the ones that end up actually running the policy stuff, okay? So, it's almost like a non-elected person is the one that's really the over, it's like a city manager. They're, they're hired to oversee everything and then, and the mayors and the councilmen, they are elected and come in and come out and it's the city manager that oversees all that, which is what we don't have.
Right, and that's why, if anyone remembers my speech when I left the board the last time, the one thing I told everybody was that this board needs staff. Because, I mean, the amount of work that's involved is, is tremendous. And now we're fortunate, we have a board with every, with all members who really like to work and will put in a lot of time. But, um, without staff and all of these policies, all the governing things, they're all written for special districts that have staff. They even say in there, staff does this and staff does that.
Yeah, but you, you read these things and all that they're requiring is to make sure your staff does this and I look at them and go, huh huh.
It's a big problem for us that we don't have staff, but we don't even have enough money to pay our utility bills.
And you know, that is, uh, and what you were talking about right there, Wendy, was also, I believe that was part of the two thousand eleven, um, grand jury, uh, report on special districts that recommended that we be wiped out and absorbed into the county.
I wrote the response to that from the board.
When was that?
Two thousand eleven.
Yeah, it's an interesting document.
Well, and that's why, well, you know, it just seems that we need to get some money in the hole or something so that, you know, even if it's just a part-time, I don't know, I, I, I'm just talking.
We need help desperately, but we've got it, a lot of things we have to straighten out first, so.
Because right now, is it just, it's Bev is the one that's been the consistent person.
Megan.
Right, right.
And, you know, and that, all that works because the, the staff people are supposed to, I mean, it's the board that makes the decisions on things, right, and creates policy. And then, staff keeps track of it, is that how it kind of works?
Not really, because they don't function at the policy level.
No, but they, they do keep the, the records together to, so when new people come in, then they would say, this is the book that you need to look at.
No, no, no.
No, that's what we're saying, maybe.
They just say, okay, here's the key to the files, you know, and the files aren't organized properly. There should be a binder.
When Lisa Collins came in, that was her first complaint, was, cause she came in out of the blue, like had no idea about anything and said, where's my staff packet, where's my packet?
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
And everybody went, um, yeah, yeah, so.
Alright, if there's nothing else.
Ooh, we have two hours.
Does someone wanna move to adjourn? We're adjourned.
I make sure I'm leaving.
Okay.
Alright.
Thank you, everybody.
So Wendy, you said you ha, you copied the, the EJAC plan for this and you have it in the company?
Maybe.
I scanned them in order to make white-out copies and stuff, so I'll go back and scan files and see if I still have.
Okay, that would be really handy, you could give him that.
Yeah, I'll look and maybe I could.
Cause Steve was gonna hand draw another one.
That's what he said, I just, I just talked to him and I said I'd draw.
Good.
Oh, oh, good, thanks Wendy.
Yeah, that'll be really handy.
Okay, now that we're adjourned, what's on that?
So we'll have to make sure and scan the Majeska one too and the children's centers, do you have copies of it?
Yeah, I should have them in there.
You're bringing copies of all the repairs, right? And then we'll add some things in.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm only making like seven copies, I, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna give one for everybody and, and, either our copier is screwed up.
And we have, once we have an office space or something, we do own a laminator now. Cause I got approved to buy a laminator and I have it, it's still in the box. But, I haven't opened it yet, so. Waiting to be used.
By you, signed.
By me, did you guys, do you guys make a copy of this or, I made copies, I just made some copies of.
What is it?
This the third quarter?
That's a third quarter report, you probably have that for you.
I have it.
No, I don't have it.
Let me, here's, get one to John's.
Yeah, I have another copy.
Cause I have them in the cookbook.
Well, do you wanna get one to Kevin too?
Um, yeah, why not?
Oh, look at this, clutter in Hunt building.
Clutter in Hunt building.
Looks a little.
If we had to tell the truth, we had to tell the truth, Rick Richards said, tell the truth.
Tell the truth.
Do you have this contact information?
Yeah, Shay gave it to me.
Yeah, well, that's.
Alright, so Phil, if you want either one of us at one of your meetings or something, just let us know. You know, if you wanna talk about this, I just did this because, I'll work on the policy stuff with you and, and things like that. But I just did this because I thought that the response was, um, not appropriate to what Trupi wanted.
Probably true, probably so, from my experience with Capri, but I don't, you know, that's very much the who's, who's inspecting and Bob was, uh, he was great to work with, boy, I tell you, and you were saying Rick is kind of the same way, so, that's, that's good.
Oh, he's really great.
We're lucky we have Capri, they do, you know, they do.
Yeah, they really try to help us.
Yeah, and the, the price is, you know, very, very, very reasonable. Is that Stephen? It's a, it's the California Association of Parks and Recreation Insurance or, it's a nonprofit, like co-op association headed. For, for all park districts and.
For insurance.
Insurance.
For insurance, yeah, they primarily do insurance, they might put on some little seminars or something from time to time, I don't know. I think like, where are they located?
Citrus.
Citrus Heights.
Citrus Heights. Up by Sacramento.
Yeah, it's too bad he ain't getting insurance.
Yes, so is our auditor, he's in Citrus Heights too.
You know, businesses and stuff.
He's in, he's in Sacramento, thank you guys.
He comes down from there too.
Thank you, everybody.
Sorry about the boring meeting, but that's how it goes.
Routine's done, but thanks for coming.
It's routine.